The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call the special, our public engagement meeting to order. And first, I'll turn it over to John, who's going to fill us in on some more information. Right? Or you can say something?
I can say something.
I don't have an agenda, so...
Yeah, personally, I did want to share with our public that again, this is a balanced budget that aligns with our strategic directions of academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. And it really reflects a host, a whole host of work done by many, many individuals district-wide. And so I wanted to just thank everyone and thank our Board of Education for providing us the direction as we make these important investments. You'll hear about an increase, a significant increase, to meet the needs of our students who are being serviced in special education. If you look deeper into the budget, you'll see some significant additional teacher time that will be used for professional development, particularly focused in on our area of mathematics. Continuation of the important ring of fiber as we make sure that we have sustainability and long-term ability to deliver technology services to each and every one of our schools and our teachers and our students as well. So those are just a couple of the highlights. And I want to personally thank Mr. Kasha and his department for your leadership in this very, very important, important endeavor. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be posting PowerPoint from this evening's presentation tomorrow and sending it out to all board members to review. This evening will be a little different in that Monday, I went through the highlights or some of our extensive budget. Tonight, I'll have a focus... I'll focus in on some of the tax implications and how you, as a board member, hopefully will have a better understanding of the calculations and can explain it if you're presented with questions on that in the future. I'll start off with just a reminder after our mission statement on the four items that I'll talk to briefly this evening. I'll start with a referendum impact, move to tax levy information, go through a tax example that again, I think these board members will be familiar with and hopefully assist. And then finally, clarifying estimates and assumptions that were made. And then in less than two weeks, when we have a budget hearing, there'll be some slight adjustments, and I'll mention exactly what that will look like. As a reminder, on April 4th of 2017, voters approved a two-pronged referendum, one for facilities of $68.25 million that addressed capacity needs, specifically constructing a new Baird Elementary School. And I understand that some of you have had the opportunity to go over there. We certainly invite you to do that. That is scheduled to open in the fall of 2019. The additional schools had work to increase capacity, include Dan's, Eisenhower, Jackson, Martin, Sullivan, Edison, and Red Smith. Most will be opening up in a little over a year, but some as early as the spring of 2019. Safety and security needs were also part of that, in addition to adequate and appropriate spaces. So there's been a lot of work, certainly by our facilities team, to move that forward, and that is ongoing. So we look to complete it in its entirety, in terms of the facilities referendum, by late 2019. The other aspect is the non-recurring $16.5 million referendum for 10 years. And I do want to remind board members, because of inflation, of course, that $16.5 has less of an impact each year you move along the scale. We are in year two of that 10-year process, okay? And that $16.5, if you're wondering where is it, because you might get that question, it is included in the tax levy that we finalize in our budget on April 29th. So of the $72 million approximately, if that $16.5 wouldn't be there, you could simply subtract that dollar amount. That means we would have to reduce our operations by that dollar amount. Okay? A few more words about it, and of course, the last is important, a reminder that the board members told the taxpayers that the mill rate would not be increasing. And we want to remind everyone again here today that the board proposal is to have a mill rate of 10.01, and it certainly honors what the voters expected. This slide I showed on Monday, and again, a reminder, generally speaking, of how levies are calculated and really what they mean. And the key values for us are the property value increase across the district at 3.42%. Our levy increase is a 2.49%. And as I just mentioned, our mill rate will be decreasing. So again, there's three different numbers or figures going there. Hopefully during this presentation and the one on Monday, you have a better understanding of how that impacts the budget that you're responsible for. Now, this is the spreadsheet that I mentioned on Monday that we would be bringing forward so you could get or have a visual of the fluctuations in property values and what that means to taxpayers. And hopefully my pointer will work, but here's what I want you to focus in on. I just said the average is 3.42%, but not everyone lives in a home of similar value, of course. And we have eight municipalities right here, and you see that the range is what I described on Monday, from a negative 9.35 in the town of Eden to the city, or excuse me, to the village of Bellevue, at an increase of 6.22. So this is our proposed 1819 levy computation. And I will ask Lori to show you quickly, and we'll come back to this slide in a moment, but if you could pull up for us the 1718 levy, it's the second from the bottom there. What I want to show you is this same drawing from last year, and if you could widen cell C, or column C, excuse me. Yep. That's plenty. There you go. I want to show you that here you had change too. So it does happen every year that you've ever served on the board. And when we talk about averages, last year was 4.09. Well, again, look at the town of Eden. It's actually up 9.75, and this year they're down.
Right.
And what I want you to understand is, what's important is that the value and then the percentage of really what it means. The city of Green Bay, you can see, makes up 70% of the value of our school district in terms of property value. So a small fluctuation in any of these municipalities, be it a reassessment, or a factory, or, I mean, there could be a lot of reasons why. If there's a significant change in an area where you don't have high property value, it will move it and whipsaw it much more than it would be in a dense population area or assessed area like the city. So if I could go back to the PowerPoint to show you again what we're looking at for this year, you can see that the values right here have not changed very much. The city of Green Bay is approximately 70% of the value. Therefore, this 3.66 is the majority of people. So the ranges I'll show you in a moment, hopefully will give you a better idea when people ask about it. Well, you're going to have some that are going to have lower tax bills up here, right? And then you'll have others that are a little higher than average. And why is it not average? Well, again, we have eight municipalities, all of it form our property value for our school district, and the fluctuations occur every year. And this year, you see that range between negative nine all the way up to six. So it's a 15-point range in property changes. Now, everyone has their own opinion about values of homes and assessments, but we're going off of assessed values. Okay? So this spreadsheet kind of lays out where we were last year, what the net change is. And then at the bottom here in yellow, and I knew my battery would die at some point, but this is what we're going to be looking for approval on the 24th. Okay? So the numbers you see are calculated from up here in terms of the value in that 10.01 that's up here to this is what was approved last year, and this is what is proposed for this year. And it's all run through in a result of property value. That's why that October 1st property value is such an important number, this 8.906. That's what we're waiting for to finish our calculations. Okay? Here is, again, the same chart I showed you on Monday, just as a reminder of our mill rate history. And as you saw in the info card that Lori put together, the mill rate is the lowest it's been since, you see here, 2010, 2011 school year. Now, some of you have the booklets, I see, and if you do, it's on page 34, and I thought it might be simpler or a little clearer for you because there's a lot of information here. But it's the last page of the book. And it essentially is the summary of what we're proposing, broken out by each of the three fund levies, First Fund 10, and what percentage that makes up of our total levy. Then Fund 30, which is debt, again, a debt schedule that we have, you know, these aren't arbitrary numbers, they're, we have a debt schedule. And then finally, Fund 80. So you see Fund 80 has remained constant. The debt schedule does have fluctuation in it, I think, depending on our debt schedule, and we're going to be recommending a refunding in the spring, and it's to address long-term debt, and in the end, be very important in addressing long-term liabilities. I mean, as a district, we have to look forward to in those areas. Our Fund 10 levy is restricted by the revenue limit worksheet. Now, I did post that Monday and walk through some portions of it for you, but most importantly, you have an understanding that there is a limit to the amount based upon a number of factors, including enrollment and property value, that Board of Education's can by statute raise revenue. So we're restricted by that, and we need to make our budgets fit within those restrictions. So what you see here is our historical data that form the graph at the bottom and what we're proposing. Now, the tax examples are, again, back to the board behind you, and hopefully some of you recognize what you see here, but are some examples for you. And what is in yellow is what I would say is last year's mill rate at 10.10, and we selected $150,000 home. And if you were taxed last year on that $150,000 home, you paid $1,515 for our school district. Now, it does not include the reduction from the levy credit. That's a whole nother conversation, so I'm just going to ignore that for a moment and for the point of our discussion, to say that's what you paid. Now, this year, if you lived in a $150,000 home, the mill rate's going to be 10.01, and you can see in green what you would pay. So that actually is a reduction of $13.50. But of course, what people want to hear and see is, all right, if I'm living in the same home, could you show some examples of what changes would do? And in the first example, that was $150,000 at fair market, and let's just say it increased by the average, right? 3.42 was the average. Last year, at 150, they paid 1515. And then if it increased, and we kept that mill rate at 1010, they'd pay 1566.81, right? That's a, you know, the home is appreciating, and you would expect that you would be paying But our proposal brings that 1010 down to 1001. So instead of 1566, you'll be paying 1552.85. Now, you see the difference between the yellow and the green, and then we even put it in a monthly dollar amount for you to see as well. Because, you know, some people relate to that a little better, just another way to show the same thing. The example underneath that, move our largest increase that you saw at 6.22 on that $150,000 home. And notice I did include, you know, what that value of the home would now be. Instead of 150, it'd be 159330. So the largest increase here would move it up to $1,594.89. If we had kept the mill rate at 1010, you see what they would have paid. But it's still an increase, and I don't want anyone to think it's not, of almost $80. And that's what I described on Monday. Now, for those that wanted to know, how about where my property decreased? Well, now that $150,000 home is down to what you see here at 135975. So they'll be seeing a reduction in their taxes, and you would expect that. In fact, you're going to see a bigger reduction from a 1010 down to a 10.01. This is how it's calculated and pretty simply laid out for people to get a better understanding of where we were last year, with the range in property values that we have, what we can expect on tax bills. I think in December, we'll be able to post another tax bill example for people so they can read it clearly. One of the larger issues that we have, actually, there's a few, but one is the mill rates are not printed. You know, I wish they were. Secondly, voucher levels are not printed. I know the board did pass a motion recommending that they be posted, and, you know, I don't know what will happen with that, but they're currently not. Second, or excuse me, the third, is the referendum dollars that were approved in 2017. Last year, if you remember, the 10-year $16.5 was listed. This upcoming year, the $68.25 will be listed. It doesn't have any impact on the tax bill, but it is required that the board posts that information on tax bills. So again, in December, we'll have something for people to follow along if there are questions regarding how to read a tax bill, because we all get them once a year, and you're not familiar with them if you don't work with them on a regular basis. And when new requirements come in, it tends to confuse people, and we certainly don't want to do that. We want to be very clear in what the board agrees to do. Because the final step after the approval process is to then contact the municipalities to let them know what dollar amounts. So you have to be very precise on all of those, because we're talking about, you know, a substantial budget here. Yes?
Do you know why the mill rate isn't printed on there? Is there a reason? Has there been discussion on that?
You know, I don't have a good reason as to why. There certainly is a lot of discussion about what to put on tax bills. And currently, what is in state statute, of course, we're going to follow, and I'd like to see a few different things and a few other things removed. The levy credit is one of those, vouchers are another. Referendums, you know, that's fine. If the voters agree to, you know, they should know what we're paying for. And they want to make it as transparent as possible. There's a lot of numbers on there, and, you know, I guess, part of your discussions with legislators, you can ask those questions, because I don't have, I don't have a magic answer on that.
But there's never been an actual statement made from anyone at the state level about why that's not on there. There's never been a reason they've...
Not that I'm aware of, unless anyone else has that line felt, or if you've...
No, no, there's a, there's, that was never an issue that's been brought to the table like the tax levy credits or the vouchers are probably one of the biggest areas that people are wanting transparency on. But the more transparent, I like the fact that you're going to bring it forward and have a conversation with our public about their tax bill so they understand what part is the school, because that gets very confusing, and what part is not, so...
Well, those tax examples that are listed, it is important to have numbers on there because in the end, that's what they're going to see in December.
Absolutely, right.
And that's why we posted it in the past to assist in that regard. Finally, and again, I mentioned this on Monday, but I'd like to make sure you understand, on the 24th, when we do go through the budget here and process, I will start and provide you with some changes that are necessary because of the timing of the numbers that come out. But I will tell you tonight, the mill rate and the total levy will have no change. There will be no changes. I just need to move things around to make certain that we're following not only our revenue, but our expenditure estimates. And because of the data and the timing of it, it inevitably does occur. So I don't want anyone alarmed, it's just part of the natural process that we go through. And I've already completed it. I thought about going through it tonight, but I didn't want to confuse anyone. I want to make sure you had a better basis for understanding, because aside from the changes, the approval will be then up to the board.
John, if there's some changes, a budget is just that, a budget, and within that framework. So if there are some significant changes throughout the course of the year from here till the next budget, I would assume you would bring those forward so that the board would be aware of any significant, and make an amendment to the budget. Is that the typical process that you would follow, or...
We do, and if we have any amendments to the budget, we also are required to log it with DPI as well. And part of the reason it's important for us to do that is, when we have estimates for subsequent years, they're using what is in their system for the board-approved budget for estimates. And it's a lot more transparent for everyone, because if a large school district has a significant change in the pool of equalized aid, as an example, is diverted in another direction because they have changed their budget, you know, it's really important that we would make those adjustments. I can make them in our model and know full well what the anticipated change would be, but it is important for that reason alone. And of course, the board to understand any expenditures that you're approving during the course of the year. Now, I do want you to ask the question to yourself, or even publicly, exactly what the funding source is and how we would be paying for this. And I've attempted to make sure that our administration understood that, because it is restricted in terms of the revenue that we have. People have some fantastic ideas, we just have to make sure we can sustain those or redirect from other resources. The 1920 budget is underway, and again, in January, when we looked at a five-year model, what occurs in November is going to make a difference, so we'll keep you posted. That is all I had this evening, unless you had anything else.
Any other, any questions?
Can you say what happens in November, too? What do you mean by that?
Well, just with the election.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I think it does make a difference, and...
Huge. I think we know, yeah. This is a very important election.
Yep. At this point, we would conduct our public engagement session. Hi, is there any, I don't have any forms filled out. Is there anyone who would like to speak before us this evening? All right, seeing none, we will close that portion of our meeting. And did you want to offer any closing comments?
I want to be sure that people recognize that the board will be taking a vote on this, but it will be, what is it, the 29th?
The 29th.
They can always go to our website, it's on the main banner, and be able to find the budget that is just being discussed now. We encourage people who might have questions or want to weigh in to fill out the form, and John is available to answer any specific questions that people might have, because we want our public to be well-informed, because the board, the board will have to make this very critical decision. So I'll put that out there as just a reminder that people are welcome to still weigh in if they couldn't come this evening but could provide input to the board. So anything that comes our way that the board should see, we would make sure, correct Lori, we'd make sure the entire board received whatever comments and commentary is provided. So I'll put that out there. And thank you again, John, for all your work on this, and your staff as well. I know that they're not here tonight, but certainly they're quietly working always behind the scenes, so great appreciation. And to all of our building principals and department leads and everyone who contributed.
And the meeting on the 29th is 6:00 P.M.
I too, I want to echo too, on behalf of all of us, a great appreciation for the work you've done and careful, meticulous work you do that I, that I know about some of it, but, and then just everyone else who's had a big role in putting the numbers together. It's very much a team effort, and I think really represents the board's decisions throughout the year in terms of assuring that all of our students are college, career, and community ready. And then also, thank you, I heard from many board members that your presentation last on Monday and tonight, just the clarity with what you presented, the numbers, and, because it is very complicated, and I think for those in the community that have a chance to watch that, I think they will appreciate that too. So thank you. And I would entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible. necessary improvements to make the information accessible.